Sergeant Lugo, can you start your recording, please?
PC recording, good.
Backup is rolling.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to today's remote New York City Council hearing on the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. At this time, would council staff please turn on their video? Please place electronic devices on vibrate or silent. If you wish to submit testimony, you may do so at landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. That is landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. I'm Councilmember Francisco Moya, Chair of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. I am joined remotely today by Councilmembers Levin, Barry G., Rivera, and Borelli. Today, we will vote on items heard by the Subcommittee on our April 5 meeting, including a pre-considered LU for the Bedford Avenue rezoning, a pre-considered LU for the citywide zoning for coastal flood resiliency proposal, and the pre-considered LU's for three separate resilient neighborhood proposals, including Gerson Beach, Sheep's Head Bay, and Old Howard Beach. We will also hold public hearings on proposals for the 431 Concord Avenue rezoning, 86 Fleet Place text amendments, and the 68-19 Woodhaven Boulevard rezoning. Today, we will vote to approve a pre-considered LU under ULP number C210043ZMK for the 135-137 Bedford Avenue rezoning proposal relating to property in Councilmember Levin's district in Brooklyn. The proposal seeks a zoning map amendment to establish a C14 overlay district in existing R6A and R6B districts on the east side of Bedford Avenue between North 9th and North 10th Streets. The proposed action would match an existing commercial overlay district across the street and facilitate a new mixed-use development with ground floor commercial use and residential units on the upper floors. Councilmember Levin is in support of the proposal. We will also vote to approve three separate but related proposals by the Department of City Planning under the Resilient Neighborhoods Initiative. These proposals are all intended to facilitate resilient development in areas vulnerable to flooding. We will vote to approve pre-considered LU's under C210130ZMK and N210131ZRK for the Gerson Beach Resilient Neighborhoods proposal relating to property in Councilmember Mizell's district in Brooklyn. The proposal seeks a zoning map amendment to change existing R4, C3, and C22 districts to R1, C3A, and C23 districts, and a related zoning text amendment to establish a new special coastal risk district. Councilmember Mizell is in support of the proposal. We will also vote a pre-considered LU under N210132ZRK for the Sheep's Heads Bay Resilient Neighborhood proposal relating to property in Councilmember Deutsch's district in Brooklyn. The proposal seeks a zoning text amendment to align existing regulations of the special Sheep's Head Bay district with flood-resilient buildings and design standards. Councilmember Deutsch is in support of the proposal. We will vote to approve a pre-considered LU under C210133ZMQ for the Old Howard Beach Resilient Neighborhoods proposal relating to property in Councilmember Ulrich's district in Queens. The proposal seeks a zoning map amendment to replace an existing R31 and R32 district with R3X and R31 districts to more closely match the existing build context. Councilmember Ulrich is in support of the proposal. And we will vote to approve with modifications a pre-considered LU for the Department of City Planning's zoning for coastal flood resiliency proposal under ULP's number N210095ZRY. This is a citywide zoning text amendment to update temporary provisions adopted on an emergency basis after Hurricane Sandy and is intended to facilitate flood-resilient design measures to provide better protection from flood risks in vulnerable areas, support public access to waterfront sites through resilient open space design, and help New Yorkers recover quickly from our future disasters. Our modification will include clarifications around applicability of the proposed floodplain regulations as well as clarifications to certain bulk regulations, including changes to address community feedback regarding floor area as well as to permit obstruction rules for buildings and spaces accommodating new accessory mechanical equipment. I now would like to take this opportunity to allow any of the council members who are present that would like to speak on any one of the rezonings, if there are any.
Chair, I see no members with hands raised at the moment.
Okay. And before I call a vote, I'd like to also acknowledge that we have been joined by Councilmember Ayala. And now, I now call for a vote to approve the pre-considered LU's relating to the Bedford Avenue rezoning proposals and the resilient neighborhoods proposal for Gerson Beach, Sheep's Head Bay, and Old Howard Beach, and to approve with modifications, I've described the pre-considered LU for the zoning for coastal flood resiliency proposal. Council, can you please call the roll?
Chair Moya.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Levin.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Gordenchik.
Aye.
Councilmember Ayala.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
I vote aye. Thank you.
Chair, the vote is currently six in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and no abstentions. The vote will remain open as we wait for Councilmember Reynoso.
Okay. Okay, so before we turn our hearings, I will first like to recognize our Subcommittee Council to review the remote meeting procedures.
Thank you, Chair Moya. I am Arthur Ha, Council to this Subcommittee. Members of the public wishing to testify were asked to register for today's hearings. If you wish to testify and have not already registered, we ask that you please do so now by visiting the New York City Council website at www.council.nyc.gov to sign up. Members of the public may also view a live stream broadcast of this meeting at the Council's website. As a technical note, for the benefit of the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of any presentation shown today, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. When called to testify, individuals appearing before the Subcommittee will remain muted until recognized by the Chair to speak. Applicant teams will be recognized first. Members of the public will be called and recognized in panels in groups of up to four names at a time. When the Chair recognizes you, your microphone will be unmuted. Please take a moment to check your device and confirm that your microphone is on before you begin speaking as there is a slight delay in the process of unmuting. Public testimony will be limited to two minutes per witness. If you have additional testimony you would like the Subcommittee to consider, or if you have written testimony you wish to submit instead of appearing before the Subcommittee, you may email it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number and/or project name in the subject line of your email. During the hearing, council members with questions should use the Zoom raise hand function. The raise hand button should appear either at the bottom of your participant panel or at the bottom of your primary viewing window. Councilmembers with questions will be announced in order as they raise their hands, and Chair Moya will recognize members to speak. Witnesses are requested to remain in the meeting until excused by the Chair as council members may have questions. Finally, there will be pauses over the course of this meeting for various technical reasons. We ask that you please be patient as we work through any issues. Chair Moya will now continue with today's agenda items.
Thank you, Arthur. I now open the public hearing on pre-considered LU items under ULP numbers C200274ZMX and N00275CRX for the 431 Concord Avenue rezoning proposal, requesting a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment relating to property in Councilmember Ayala's district in the Bronx. I will remind the viewing public, for anyone wishing to testify on this item, if you have not already done so, you may register online in advance, and you may do that now by visiting the Council's website. And now, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize Councilmember Ayala for some remarks. Do we have Councilmember Ayala?
Councilmember Ayala is here. We may just be having a technical issue. No, she's in a remote location.
Okay, let's give her a minute.
Councilmember Ayala, if you can hear us, there is a request for you to unmute, I believe, on your device.
Sorry, I was on an emergency call.
No worries.
I didn't hear what you were calling me about.
No worries, Councilwoman. We are about to go into the rezoning proposal in your district, and I was seeing if you wanted to give any opening remarks. If not, we can...
I didn't prepare any remarks other than, you know, what I will share is that I am in support of this project. The property is now dilapidated, underutilized space. That's really just, you know, hasn't brought any real benefit to the community. So the redevelopment, you know, of the lot in and of itself is a huge one for the community. The fact that this is gonna bring in, you know, truly affordable housing is also a big one. So I wanted to thank the developers for working with us on this project. We've been working on it for about a year and a half now, and COVID kind of threw a little wrench in the plans to do it sooner. But I'm excited to, you know, that we're finally at this stage, and excited for you also to hear what the project looks like as well. My apologies for that.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Ayala. And now, Council, if you can please call the first panel for this item.
The applicant panel for this item includes Frank St. Jacques Land Use Counsel for the applicant. Mr. St. Jacques, if you have not already done so, please accept the unmute request in order to begin to speak.
Great, thank you. I'll go ahead and begin my presentation.
And sorry. Swear you went first.
Thank you.
Please, if you can please administer the affirmation.
Mr. St. Jacques, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this Subcommittee in answer to all council member questions?
I do.
Thank you. We are in receipt of your slideshow presentation for this proposal. When you are ready to present the slideshow, please say so, and it will be displayed on the screen by our staff. Slides will be advanced when you say next. Please note that there may be a slight delay in both the initial loading and the advancing of slides. As a technical note for the benefit of the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now, if the panelists would please restate your name, organization, for the record, you may begin.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Moya and members of the Subcommittee. My name is Frank St. Jacques. I'm with Ackerman LLP, where Land Use Counsel, representing the applicant. If you could go ahead and load the slideshow, I'm happy to begin the presentation. Great, thank you. Next slide, please. We are here to present an application for a zoning map amendment to change an existing M12 zoning district to an R7D zoning district, and a zoning text amendment to establish the Mandatory Inclusionary Housing Program, or MIH, within the rezoning area. These actions would facilitate the redevelopment of an underutilized site within 11-story residential building with 88 units that would be developed with HPD's Extremely Low and Low-Income Affordability, or HLEP, program subject to HPD approval. Next slide, please. The rezoning area is located at the edge of an M12 zoning district that was mapped in 1964, and the rezoning area is within the transit zone. Next slide, please. The rezoning area is shaded red in this slide, which shows the surrounding built context. It is located at the corner of Concord Avenue and East 145th Street. St. Mary's Park is shown on the left-hand side of the slide. The Six Train is a few blocks away at the East 143rd Street Station at Southern Boulevard on the right-hand side of the slide. The BX19, excuse me, BX17, 19, and 33 bus lines also serve the area. Next slide, please. Land uses in the surrounding area is shown in this map. Industrial use, shown in purple, is concentrated south of the rezoning area in M12 and M13 districts, and in the IBZ, located south of East 144th Street. North of East 144th Street, near the rezoning area, there's some non-conforming residential use, shown in yellow and orange in the M12 zoning district, as well as a few non-conforming industrial uses further north in the R71 residential district. Next slide, please. The rezoning area consists of the northeastern portion of the block, including three contiguous tax lots. The development site is approximately 13,750 square feet and has about a 125-feet affrontage on Concord Avenue. Next slide, please. The proposed rezoning would change the red-shaded portion of the zoning map from M12 to R7D, and the proposed rezoning would allow for the production of new housing within Bronx Community District 1, which is not currently permitted in the existing M12 zoning district. This zoning change is appropriate because the rezoning area is located at the edge of the M12, excuse me, the edge of the M12 zoning district adjacent to an R71 residential district, which has comparable bulk provisions to the proposed R7D. It's also in close proximity to public transportation and within walking distance to St. Mary's Park. Next slide, please. The proposed rezoning would facilitate the development of an 11-story quality housing residential building with approximately 88 units. It would rise to 11 stories and after 15-foot setbacks above a nine-story base. Next slide, please. Here are some illustrative massings showing the design, which incorporates different facade materials. And outdoor space would be provided via balconies and as well as a 2,500-square-foot recreation area on the roof. Next slide, please. Here are street views showing the improved streetscape with the proposed development. Next slide, please. And this is the final slide. The applicant is seeking to develop the building with HPD's HLEP term sheet. Subject to HPD approval, half of the 88 units, or 44, would be affordable at less than 50% of the area median income. The remaining half, or the remaining 44, would be affordable at less than 80% AMI. We note that there's a 15% set aside for formerly homeless households, and the HLEP term sheet requires that, when developed under MIH, the number of permanently affordable units would be increased by 15% or, here, 13 units, reaching a total of 35 permanently affordable units. That concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions before I turn it over to Councilmember Ayala. I know that the Bronx Community Board, one, didn't approve this application. Can you speak to the work that your team has done since then to engage the community support on this project and address some of the concerns that were raised by CB1?
Sure. I think really one of the main concerns was the condition of the site when we initially met with the Community Board in fall of last year. Before that time, and then in particular since that time, the applicant owner of the site has arranged for several times a week someone coming out to maintain the site, to make sure that there's no debris, to clean the site. The owner has also sought permits to demolish the site and dislocation of the development. There's a dilapidated structure there that's caused some problems. There's been a fire. So we're seeking to have that demolished in preparation for the proposed development.
Okay. And over the course of planning for this project, the number of anticipated units had decreased from 92 units to 88. Can you speak to why that is, and is that due to the increase in two-bedroom, three-bedroom units in this project?
That's correct. When we had met with the Borough President's Office, there was a request that the number of two- and three-bedroom units be increased. That, in order to increase the number of two- and three-bedroom units, there is a decrease in studios and ones. So the overall unit count went from 92 units to the current 88 units.
Okay. So, wait, can you say that again? How many two-to-three-bedroom units are planned for the project?
There are currently, one moment. So, the... There are 28 two-bedrooms proposed and 10 three-bedrooms proposed. With the change from the, as initially filed with 92 units to get to 88, we removed four studios and removed four one-bedrooms and added five two-bedrooms to arrive at the current unit distribution.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And you had indicated plans to develop, in the beginning of your presentation, you had indicated plans to develop the site under HPD, the HLEP program. Can you provide a sense of where this project stands in the pre-development process?
Sure. So the initial intake form has been submitted to HPD, and HPD has provided comments on the initial intake form. And we're currently in the process of responding to those comments in order to move forward with the project.
And when do you expect to close on the HPD financing?
That I actually don't know offhand, but I can discuss that with the project team and our affordable housing consultant, and potentially with HPD, and provide that information after the hearing, if possible.
And maybe you can find out as well of when you expect to secure all agency approvals needed to begin construction on this development?
I'd be happy to find out information and provide it to your office.
Okay, great. And last question before I turn it over to Councilmember Ayala. Has a general contractor been selected for this project?
Not as of yet.
Okay. And when you do, can you speak to whatever efforts will be made to hire locally on the construction projects? And what efforts will be made to hire MWBE firms on the construction of this project?
I'd be happy to. I'll note that the developer is a local Bronx developer. They've, and they've also developed some buildings within Brooklyn. But that's, you know, typically their process is to work locally, but I can provide more detail in writing.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's it for me. Councilmember Ayala, if you have any questions? We'll turn it over to you.
Sorry, I'm having difficulty unmuting this morning. I don't have any questions. I think that, you know, in regards to the objections raised by the Community Board, you know, they're heard and understood, but I think that, you know, the property had been sitting there vacant for quite some time before this developer purchased it prior to COVID. And, you know, unfortunately, because it was sitting there, you know, empty for quite some time, is a house, a one-story, I think, one-story, two-story house property, then we did see some squatting in, you know, in the building that contributed to fires. And I think that all of that will be remediated through this development. And, you know, really pleased with, you know, the outcome, the ensuring that all of the units are under 80% of the AMI and the 50% are reserved for under 50 is really a huge win for this part of the district, where, you know, we're still known as being a part of the poorest congressional district, and we want to make sure that we're developing in a smart, efficient way that doesn't further, you know, contribute to the displacement of South Bronx residents. So I am, you know, really pleased with the outcome thus far and appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Ayala. Thank you. I now invite any of my colleagues who have questions for this panel. Council, do we have any council members have questions?
Chair, I see no members with questions at this time.
There being no questions, the applicant panel is excused. Council, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on the Concord Avenue rezoning application?
If there are any members of the public who wish to testify on the Concord Avenue rezoning proposal, please press the raise hand button now. And Chair Moya, the meeting will stand at ease briefly while we check for any newly registered members. Okay, Chair Moya, I see no other members, no members of the public who wish to testify on this item.
There being no members of the public who wish to testify on the pre-considered LU items under ULP number C200274ZMX and N00275ZRX for the Concord Avenue rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the items are laid over. I now open the public hearing on the pre-considered LU item under ULP number N210061ZRK for the 86 Fleet Place proposal, seeking a zoning text amendment relating to property in Majority Leader Combs' district in Brooklyn. As a general reminder to the public, if you wish to testify in this meeting, please visit the Council's website now to complete the online registration process, or you may also submit written testimony to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Now, Council, if you can, please call up the first panel for this item.
The applicant panel for this item will include Rachel Skoll, Land Use Counsel for the applicant, and Ralph Zarinski on behalf of the applicant. Analysts, if you have not already done so, please accept the unmute request in order to begin to speak.
Thank you.
And Council, if you could, please administer the affirmation.
Analysts, please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee in answer to all council member questions?
I do.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are in receipt of your slideshow presentation for this proposal. When you are ready to present the slideshow, please say so, and it will be displayed on screen by our staff. Slides will be advanced when you say next. Please note that there may be slight delay in both the initial loading and the advancing slides. Once again, anyone who requires an accessible version of this presentation may send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now, if the panelists would please restate your names and organizations, for the record, you may begin.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Skoll. I'm associate at Greenberg Charred. Ralph, do you want to go ahead and state your name?
Hi, Ralph Zarinski, Red Apple Real Estate. Sorry, my video's getting an error message.
Thanks. If whoever's controlling the slides could pull those up, greatly appreciate it. Thank you. So, I'm with Greenberg Charred. We represent Red Apple Fleet, 86 Fleet Place Development LLC in this application to amend the special downtown Brooklyn district's retail continuity requirements. Next slide, please. I am joined today by Ralph on behalf of Red Apple. Red Apple owns 86 Fleet Place at the Southwest... Red Apple owns 86 Fleet Place at the southwest corner of Myrtle Avenue and Fleet Place in a C64 zoning district in the special downtown Brooklyn district. Next slide, please. You see the property there in red. Next slide, please. The property is improved with a 32-story building that was completed in 2017. The building's ground floor within 50 feet of Myrtle Avenue is subject to the special district's retail continuity restrictions, which require such space be used for limited generally commercial uses. Next slide, please. The building's ground floor contains approximately 10,000 square feet of space that has been reserved for retail use. The applicant has been marketing this space freeze by up to four commercial tenants since 2016. Despite those efforts, the space remains empty. Within the past year or so, dating back to before the pandemic, the applicant was approached by daycare and medical tenants interested in the space, leading us to this application, which would amend the zoning resolution to allow all non-residential uses permitted by the site's underlying C64 zoning district on the building's ground floor. Next slide, please. This is the existing retail continuity map for downtown Brooklyn. In 2018, the council approved a similar application to allow non-residential uses on the ground floors of three Red Apple buildings on the block east of 86 Fleet Place, where you see that non-residential requirement there on the map. That application resulted in three community facility tenants in those buildings, a daycare dialysis dialysis center each run by local not-for-profits and an urgent care clinic. Like the buildings to the east, 86 Fleet Place has no frontage on Flatbush Avenue Extension and is located across Myrtle Avenue from Ingersoll Houses, lending the area more residential character than locations at the sound, the center of downtown Brooklyn. These characteristics make the property more suitable for a tenant such as a community facility tenant that would benefit local residents. Next slide, please. This is the proposed map. We would extend that non-residential requirement to the west to cover the frontage of the 86 Fleet Place property. Next slide, please. And we are proposing to amend the the text of the section to match, match the changes to the map. The community board and the borough president both issued favorable recommendations for this application. And that is the presentation, and Ralph and I are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Back in 2018, the council approved this same zoning change that allowed the option for a sitting community facilities in the ground floor spaces for the rest of the block on Myrtle Avenue between Fleet Place and Ashland Place. Why was 86 Fleet not included in that original application?
Sure, so I can let Ralph speak to this in a little bit more detail, but I think that Red Apple had a little bit higher hopes for the commercial viability of this building. Ralph, do you want to add some color to that?
Yeah, when we did the first one, you know, we kept it to the low-rise buildings. We thought we had, you know, decent chance of marketing to, you know, pure retail tendencies at 86 Fleet Place, given that it was somewhat closer to Flatbush Avenue and in the base of a bigger tower. But unfortunately, the, you know, the typical retail tenant never materialized for that project either.
Okay. And how is this block different from the rest of downtown Brooklyn where storefront retail is required? And why is this particular block appropriate for allowing community facilities?
Sure. So this part of downtown Brooklyn sort of juts out to the east from the more central part of downtown Brooklyn. Being across Flatbush Avenue Extension lends it a somewhat different character because there's already so much residential and purely residential use in the neighborhood with the nature developments across Myrtle Avenue. And so what we've seen is that in this area, the character really does change from Flatbush Avenue Extension heading east. It lends it a more residential character. And so there's been this desire for community facility tenants in the area because there are so many residents nearby who would use these services.
Okay. And do you have a community facility tenant identified yet?
Ralph, would you like to speak to us?
Yes, we do. We have a local not-for-profit medical use that we know who's really is really contingent upon, you know, obviously, community facility uses being allowed in this property.
Okay. Thank you. That's that's it for me. And now we'll check with our council to see if there's any council members that have any questions for this panel.
No, Chair, I see no members with questions for this panel.
There being no further questions, the applicant panel is excused. Council, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on the 86 Fleet Place?
If there are any members of the public who wish to testify on the 86 Fleet Place proposal, please press the raise hand button now. And the meeting will stand at ease while we check for any other members of the public who may have registered. Sorry, Chair Moya, I see no members of the public who wish to testify on the 86 Fleet Place proposal.
Thank you, Arthur. There being no members of the public who wish to testify on the pre-considered LU item under ULP number N210061ZRK for the 86 Fleet Place proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. I now open the public hearing on pre-considered LU items under ULP numbers C200272ZMQ and N200273ZRQ for the 68-19 Woodhaven Boulevard rezoning proposal, which seeks a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment and which relates to property in Councilmember Kozlowski's district in Queens. I will remind the viewing public, for anyone wishing to testify on this item, if you have not already done so, you may register online in advance. And you may do that now by visiting the council's website. Counsel, if you can, please call the first panel for this item.
The applicant panel for this item will once again be Frank Saint Jacques, land use counsel for the applicant. Mr. Saint Jacques, if you have not already done so, please accept the unmute request in order to begin to speak.
Great, thank you.
And counsel, if you could administer the affirmation.
Analysts, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and in answer to all council member questions?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are in receipt of your slideshow presentation for this proposal. When you are ready to present the slideshow, please say so, and it will be displayed on screen by our staff. Slides will be advanced when you say next. Please note that there may be a slight delay in both the initial loading and the advancing of slides. Once again, anyone who requires an accessible version of this presentation may send an email request to land use testimony at council.nyc.gov. And now if the panelist would restate your name and organization for the record.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Moya and subcommittee members. Again, I'm Frank Saint Jacques of Ackerman LLP, representing the applicant. I am ready to to begin my presentation, if you wouldn't mind lighting, excuse me, loading the slideshow. And next slide. This application is for a zoning map amendment to change existing C81 and R4 zoning districts to an R6A and R6AC23 zoning district, as well as a zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area or MIH area within the rezoning area. These actions would facilitate the development of a seven-story mixed-use building with 87 units, approximately 26 of which would be permanently income restricted under the mandatory inclusionary housing program. Next slide, please. The rezoning area shown here shaded in red in the inset was mapped in 1961 with the current auto-oriented C81 district on the western side and low-density non-conci-, excuse me, low-density non-contextual R4 residential district on the eastern side. Next slide, please. The rezoning area includes the approximately 26,000 square foot development site outlined in red and the adjacent site to the east, which is improved with a six-story and basement, 69 and a half foot tall residential building that is non-compliant in the R4 zoning district that is mapped on that portion of the rezoning area. You can see two other similar six-story and basement multifamily buildings to the south and southeast of the development site shown in along Yellowstone Boulevard. Woodhaven Boulevard bounding the development site to the west is a wide street. St. John Cemetery is located across Woodhaven Avenue further to the west, and several bus lines are available in the area, providing connections to subway and Long Island Railroad service. Next slide, please. The proposed R6A with a C23 commercial overlay and R6A districts would be mapped along the 68, along 68th Road between Woodhaven Boulevard to the west and Alderton Avenue to the east, as shown in this zoning change map. Next slide, please. The proposed development is a new seven-story mixed-use building with 87 units. The applicant agreed with Community Board Six's request to lower the building height to seven stories from eight stories and provide lower levels of affordability for the project under MIH by providing two of the three MIH income bands at 60% AMI, in addition to several construction protections that were requested by the community board. This results in 17 of the 26 units being, 17 of the 26 MIH units being affordable at 60% AMI. The proposed increase in density is appropriate at this location because of the existing built context, its location on a wide street across from us and it's, excuse me, its location on a wide street across from a significant open space resource and its proximity to public transit. Next slide, please. The proposed development at seven stories or 73 feet, eight and a half inches lines up with the adjacent multifamily building height, which is 69 and a half feet tall, as you can see in these renderings. Next slide, please. Finally, the mandatory inclusionary housing program requires a set aside for permanently income restricted housing. As we discussed, this would result in 26 permanently affordable units. The applicant team is partnering with HANNIC to be the project's nonprofit MIH administering agent. And this slide shows some of the services that HANNIC would provide in association with this project pursuant to the MIH program. That concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I just have one quick question here. Could you just please confirm your commitment to reserve two-thirds of the MIH units to families making 60% AMI or less?
Yes, we we reconfirm that commitment. This was a commitment that was made in writing to the community board and, you know, we reaffirm that commitment.
Okay. And what is the the total number of units that will be serving those families?
So the total number of income restricted units within the project under this modified MIH option two is 26.
26. Okay. Thank you. That's it. That's it for me. Counsel, is there any council members who have any questions for this panel?
No, Chair, I see no members with questions for this panel.
There being no further questions, the applicant panel is excused. Counsel, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on the Woodhaven Boulevard rezoning application?
If there are any members of the public who wish to testify on the 68-19 Woodhaven Boulevard rezoning proposal, please press the raise hand button now. Meeting, Chair, the meeting will stand at ease while we check for any additional members of the public who may have registered to testify. Chair Moya, I see no members of the public who wish to testify on this item.
Thank you. There being no members of the public who wish to testify on the pre-considered LU items under ULP numbers C200272ZMQ and N200273ZRQ for the 68-19 Woodhaven Boulevard rezoning proposal. The public hearing is now closed and the items are laid over. Before we conclude today's business, I'd like to go back to our council to close out the vote.
Thank you, Chair Moya. By a vote of six in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and no abstentions, the items are approved, approved and referred to the full land use committee.
Thank you, Arthur. That concludes today's business. I will remind the viewing public that for anyone wishing to submit written testimony for items that were heard today, please send it by email to land use testimony at council.nyc.gov. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, the subcommittee counsel, land use and other council staff, and of course, the Sergeant-at-Arms for participating in today's meeting.